All righty, all right. So, we're gonna bring the meeting back to order?
Okay, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QAC-TV 7. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at QAC.org/live or on our public-access governmental television channel provided by Breeze Line Cable Services. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to QAC.org-publiccomment. Citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@QAC.org. All comments received will be summarized during the press and public comment period on tonight's agenda. We acknowledge everyone's participation, and by attending, you acknowledge that this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you do care to speak, please sign up at the information table in the lobby. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the Commissioner's review. We will now stand to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commission President Jim Moran.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing. Last week, Queen Anne's County lost a significant pillar to the community in Diana Waterman. And I'd just like to say that on behalf of all the Commissioners, our prayers are with Thank you very much.
First up, we have the approval of our agenda for our meeting tonight, October 22nd. So, our agenda for tonight's meeting, along with the regular session minutes, the closed session minutes, the sanitary commission minutes from the last meeting on October the 8th, have all been circulated for the Commissioner's review. Do we have any additions and/or corrections?
No, motion to accept the agenda and the minutes as submitted.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, we just completed a closed session under the general provisions, Article Section 3305B7, to consult with counsel and obtain legal advice. No decisions were made in the closed session tonight. So, you want to do press and public comment?
Sure.
All right. So, next we have press and public comment. So, we appreciate all citizens for taking time to express views to the county commissioners. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Comments longer than three minutes may be submitted in writing. This commission respects your desire and right to convey your message freely. When you come forward, please speak clearly at the standing microphone, state your name, your address, and your topic of interest. And in keeping with the dignity of our office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner. And let me just say, this is for general public comment. We have four hearings tonight. If you want to speak at one of the hearings, there's signing sheets for those as well out in the lobby.
Tammy Nice.
So, my name is Tammy Nice. I live in Queen Anne Colony, 410 Congressional Drive in Stevensville. This is regarding noise, and I've been here before. My husband and I bought our house in May of 1998, where we currently reside. We live next door and share a property line with the Queen Anne Marina. When we bought our house, there was a small restaurant called Pelican Bay on the Marina property. Around 2002, the Marina was sold to a doctor who has turned the restaurant and property into a wedding venue, The Silver Swan. Due to the size of the building on the property, the owner has applied for and received a temporary tent permit each year through the Department of Planning and Zoning. The temporary tent is used to house the DJ or band, dance floor, and bar. The tent is not insulated and cannot contain the noise. I brought a photo to show you the proximity of my bedroom window to the temporary tent. I don't know if you want it now or if I can leave it with you?
Thank you.
In 2018, I had reached the end of my patience with the excessive noise. Michael Waznoski, the director at the time for the Department of Planning and Zoning, facilitated a mediation meeting with me and my husband and the manager of The Silver Swan. At this meeting, the manager was made aware of the maximum allowable decibel level for a residential area and was told he needed to adhere to the COMAR rules for noise. In 2021, I began reaching out to Amy Mordock, the current director of Queen Anne's County Planning and Zoning for assistance yet again. Once again, the noise levels became unbearable, and the manager, the same manager, was not following acceptable decibel levels. Today, I'm right back where I started six years ago, again, at my breaking point. I constantly have to ask, beg at times, for the music to be turned down, and many times that requires asking more than once. Of course, if it's a live band, asking them to turn it down is pointless. I've called the police on multiple occasions, only to be told that there's nothing they can do except ask them to turn it down, but it's not something that they can enforce. Is it possible I could play an 18-second clip of what I'm listening to on a...
Yep.
Okay. I don't know if you can hear the trumpet, but that was taken at 10:59 PM on a Sunday. In December of 2017, the Department of Planning and Zoning was asked by Commissioner Steve Wilson to research a noise ordinance. Stan Kosick...
Go ahead.
I'm almost done. Stan Kosick, a staff planner for planning and zoning, conducted the research and provided the memorandum I've handed you to Commissioner Wilson. The memo describes how Queen Anne's County currently addresses noise and also describes how adjacent counties and other jurisdictions regulate noise. The memo advances three options and provides a recommendation. I presented this memo several years ago, right here in this Commissioner's meeting, and I'm here again asking you to please review the memo and consider implementing a noise ordinance for Queen Anne's County for areas like mine, where a commercial property is located within a residential area or close proximity. Our county continues to grow, yet nothing is being put into place to protect those that live here. I'm here to ask you to please consider a noise ordinance for Queen Anne's County and protect those of us that call this county our home. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. That's all who signed up. Would anybody else like to speak at this time? Yes, ma'am. Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close press and public comment.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, next we can move into the presentations portion of our meeting tonight. First up, we had Mr. Charles McLeod with Clean Chesapeake Coalition. He respectfully just notified me and asked to be rescheduled for a meeting next month, so we will reschedule him accordingly. That moves us over to our next presenter, which is our Parks and Recreation Department. We have Director Steve Chanley and Burrow Esmeier, project manager, and we're gonna get an update with their team from Barry Dunn on the Community Recreation Center. So, folks, come on up, and if you can introduce your team members here for us. We have a presentation up on the screen, and this is also in your books on page, tab number six, item two, pages two through 21. All right. Welcome.
Thank you all for giving us a few minutes to give you guys an update of what's going on. This has been a long process, the Rec Center feasibility study. It started actually back in late January, I'm sorry, late February. It finally got underway, working with our consultants, Barry Dunn, Mr. Tom Deal, and Mr. Pat O'Toole, that are here before you. It's been a good, long process, a good learning process. They have found out a lot of things about the county and our desires, or I should say the citizens' desires, for what they're looking for in recreational activities. We started out, just real quick, we've had a number of sites that we decided to look at. We started out with four, which were representative of different areas of the county, to make sure that it was equitable. And then we have been working with these gentlemen here, and we've narrowed it down to two sites, and I don't want to take all of their thunder, so I'm gonna let you go ahead, or let them go ahead and present their findings to you all.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, we'll go through very briefly the PowerPoint that's in your packet. The first slide is the floor plan area of the Rec Center that would fit on both sites. It has in it a multipurpose, two basketball court gymnasium, four to five multipurpose classrooms, conference meeting spaces, and a kitchen, and staff offices. The next slide, I'm not gonna go into the details, but you see the red figures on the PowerPoint are the square footage of each of those areas that I just described, that come up to a gross square footage of 38,250 square feet. We also had worked with a $20 million budget. We're just slightly north of that with those plans. But we also put, to make sure they would fit on the site in any future years, the next priorities that the public told us they'd like to see. So, we have in dotted lines the future aquatic center, a future indoor turf field, and a future ice arena, and the square footage of those, as well as the capital costs. As Steve said, we narrowed down the two most popular sites based on our site analysis, Davison Farm Park being one of them. The site here, we included some road improvements coming into the site, and the total cost of the project would be $24,321,000. And at Cudner, which was the second site, the total cost opinion was right at $24 million. Again, both fit on the site. Cudner, we were able to put a walking track in there, which includes a second-floor elevator and stairwell in there, in lieu of the roadway at the other one.
I'm gonna walk you through the pro forma at a high level. So, we looked at what we call our operating costs, and we have two different things that are listed here, an analysis of using the existing staff and benefits and including those, what the operating cost would be, and the potential cost recovery. And then also, we've indicated what the cost would be if we don't include the existing staff, because you're already paying for that, and that shows that you'd end up with a net expense of $55,000 and a cost recovery of almost 91%. We've...
The revenues from membership and events?
Yeah, those revenues are from memberships, programs, and rentals. The next slide is a five-year pro forma, and this just shows how things would move out over five years, and we basically looked at this as if the facility was up and running, and the programs and everything were fully running. And then we've just projected out with the CPI, an increase of what the additional staffing would cost and what the additional revenue might bring in, and it keeps you pretty much baseline of, again, if you already are factoring in the staff costs that you already have, almost a 91% cost recovery, and a difference of, it goes from $55,000 up to $62,000 over five years, the actual additional costs to the county to operate the facility. And then, this is just an overall kind of overview. Again, as Pat said, the amenities are between $32,000 and $38,000 square feet, multipurpose, two basketball court gymnasium, one plan has a suspended running track and a second floor, four to five multipurpose classrooms, conference room, meeting spaces, a kitchen, and room for staff. The cost, the capital program, Davison, a little over $24 million, and the capital program costs for Cudner, just under $24 million. They're very close. And the operating net cost, again, either facility, $55,735 a year, giving you a cost recovery of almost 91%, which is very good. The impact to the county's operating budget for the first year is $55,735 is what is Here, we're sharing with you the current and future operating costs. So, if you look, the Recreation Division, we looked at what they're doing in fiscal year 2024. The net operating costs on the left side, they're spending approximately $686,929 for their operating costs. When you add the new facility and the additional $55,000, you would be spending $742,664. So, building this facility, the cost to actually operate it would only be an additional $55,735 annually is what's projected. The next steps in our study are to finish up our cost benefits and the economic impact that we're looking at, to finish our draft report, share that with the staff, and then to come back in November and finalize the feasibility study, all the different portions, chapters of that, and then to share with the community, stakeholders in the community in December. We just wanted to make everyone aware that we have had a social pinpoint site, an opportunity for people to give feedback throughout the process. It's still opening up. People can go here, click on this site, and give feedback about tonight's presentation and everything we've been doing throughout the project, and we've been posting all of the documents that need to be posted there. And other than that, that's our brief presentation. We wanted to make sure we had time for you to ask any questions and us to provide answers.
So, on page four, the illustration is multipurpose group exercise. Is that a gym with exercise equipment and...? No.
You're talking about the, what is there? Is it two for 900,000, 900 square feet?
Right.
Yes. That is a multipurpose space that you could do, like, group aerobics, you could do yoga, things like that.
Okay.
You could also use it for other, you know, you could have a classroom function.
It also has a dividing wall in there, too, so you can have, you know, two smaller sections, or you can have one large room, depending on what that activity or meeting is to be held in that space.
Okay.
Are those regulation-sized basketball courts?
Those are high school...
High school?
High school regulation, yes. And they're laid out appropriately, so there's space between the two courts. You can drop a curtain. You could put team benches on, you know, the sides and things like that.
Did I have a banquet?
Depending on what the banquet is, depending on the number of people and exactly what takes place. You know, one of the things is, you know, it's a great wide-open space. I'm assuming you're talking about the multipurpose gymnasium, right? You know, you want to protect the flooring that's there, so again, you know, you have to kind of see what the activity is, you know? It's nice to have a big gala or what have you, but you don't want it at the cost of the floor and the other amenities that are in there. So, you have to be smart about what you allow in there.
Steel building, is that what you base that pricing on?
The large span is a steel building, I believe, and then the other part of the building, you know, would have brick facade, everything would have a brick facade and things like that, but it was a solid facility, but economical, and something that was designed specifically for, the firm that we worked with, CHA, you know, they're planning this for your county, your location.
Hmm. Always gets quiet when you get into the 20-plus million, doesn't it? Big shells. Anybody else have any more questions? Any comments? All right. No news is good news in this case, huh? So, away we go.
So, again, one thing I'd like to say is, you know, we put them on a tight timeline by finishing up by December, obviously because of the impending budget schedule that takes place. So, we wanted to get some sort of dollar figure, so when we submit our capital budget projects for the upcoming fiscal year, you know, we submit them in December, take a look at them again in January. So, they've been great to work with, and, you know, we got, like I said, a lot of good information, and hopefully, you know, we'll be able to move forward and be able to present something to you guys in December and January for a capital project.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Nice work. To those who are the only two presentations...
Commissioners, it's just shy of 6 o'clock. We are just a little bit ahead of schedule, which is good, so we can move into some of our business items tonight. So, first, we have the Department of Public Works. We have one item, so if Mr. Quimby can come on up, we have, if he wants to switch over to tab number two. Item one, we have a mesonet license agreement, and this is for the development of a real-time weather station that the state is doing throughout Maryland, and they want to lease a small area down to the Sancho District for a automated weather station. So, I'll let Mr. Quimby describe that.
Thank you, Todd. Basically, the state wants to build up to like 70 of these stations. They have maybe 20 in operation now. If you go through this link, it's pretty fascinating, some of the things they measure, soil temperature, wind speed, humidity. So, they want to have one, at least one in every county, and whatever reason, they selected the sanitary district, which was, I was happy with. It cost about $30,000, and I was almost willing to pay for one to have one in the sanitary district, but luckily, they picked it anyways. So, they need a 33 by 33-foot lot in order to construct it all. That's what the license agreement addresses.
How tall is it?
Not that tall, like 30 some feet, I think.
Okay.
There is, there's a picture there. It's like a 33-feet monopole.
Yeah, probably because they got the person standing next to it.
But I had a better...
Basically, it's just an agreement, so they're gonna do the construction. We don't have to...
Oh, there's no money involved.
No money involved at all, so... Can't go wrong there.
Overpowered, so we don't even have the 10-meter main instrument tower, so 30 feet, 30 feet. No electric required.
Get a motion?
Yeah. I move to execute the attached license agreement with the University of Maryland for a mesonet station to be installed on the lands of the sanitary district. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, you did. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, lucky.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, that's all we have for Department of Public Works this evening. If you want to turn to tab number three, we do have nine items for consideration under new business. So, tab three, item one on page one is Proclamation 24-41 for White Cane Awareness Day.
Motion to domino, you got that?
I do. I do. See what I did there?
Some tips here.
Very clever, huh?
Young lady coming up.
Yep.
We have someone coming up here, yes? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Patty Ann Bear. I am with the National Federation of the Blind, Maryland affiliate. I am a board member of the Asian Shore chapter, and I am just delighted to be back in my home county. I grew up on Ken Island. I graduated Queen Anne's County High School in 1985, and I'm just really delighted to be back here and to receive this proclamation.
Very good. Well, I have the pleasure and the honor to read that proclamation. Whereas the white cane, which every blind and low-vision citizen of our county has the right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life at the capacity to work productively and competitive employment. And whereas the white cane, by allowing every blind and low-vision person to move freely and safely from place to place, makes it possible for the blind and low-vision to fully participate and contribute to our society and to live the lives they want. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists and cyclists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind or low-vision person carrying a white cane. And whereas Maryland law also calls upon employers, employers, both public and private, to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our blind and low-vision citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And whereas the state of Maryland, through its public agencies, and with the cooperative assistance of the National Federation of the Blind of Maryland, can and should facilitate the expansion of employment opportunities for a greater acceptance of blind and low-vision persons in a competitive labor market. Now, therefore, we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do... And whereas the state of Maryland, through its public agencies, and with the cooperative assistance of the National Federation of the Blind of Maryland, can and should facilitate the expansion of employment opportunities for a greater acceptance of blind and low-vision persons in a competitive labor market. Now therefore, we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, as White Cane Awareness Day in Queen Anne's County, and do call upon our schools, colleges, and universities to offer full opportunities for training to blind and low-vision persons, upon employers and the public to utilize the available skills and competent that the blind and low-vision persons, and to open new opportunities for the blind and those with low vision in our rapidly changing society, and upon all citizens to recognize the white cane as a tool of independence for blind and low-vision pedestrians on our streets and highways. And it's signed by our county commissioners, and I'm gonna walk this down.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have item number two on page two, and this is proclamation twenty-four dash forty-three, Economic Development Week. And this recognizes the week of October twenty-first as Economic Development Week.
I have that one. Proclamation twenty-four forty-three. Whereas Economic Development Week is an event established by Maryland Economic Development Association to celebrate the achievements of economic workforce and community development practitioners throughout Maryland communities. And whereas Queen Anne's County Economic and Tourism Development is an active member of the Maryland Economic Development Association, otherwise known as MEDA, a nonprofit organization established in nineteen sixty-one whose mission is to enhance the knowledge and skills of its members, encourages partnerships and networking among people committed to bringing jobs and capital to Maryland, and promotes economic development as an investment in Maryland. And whereas Queen Anne's County Economic and Tourism Development is a professional economic development organization whose mission is to elevate Queen Anne's County as an economically vibrant, welcoming, and diverse place for business and recreation by delivering exceptional customer services and timely, relevant resources, proactively cultivating business attraction, retention, and expansion, developing and strengthening destination amenities, promoting visitor opportunities and experiences, forging intern and apprentice partnerships, and skillfully managing county resources to fuel economic growth. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas Queen Anne's County Economic and Tourism Development aspires to be a valued partner and respected resource for employers, entrepreneurs, business owners, stakeholders, and visitors. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And whereas the Department of Economic and Tourism Development inspires Queen Anne's County residents, visitors, and employees to experience the beauty, culture, and amenities of our eastern shore lifestyle. And now therefore, we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, recognize the week of October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four as Economic Development Week, and remind individuals of the importance of the county's efforts to support economic, tourism, workforce, and community development opportunities for its citizens and local businesses.
Time's your county.
Very good. Heather, I have a request.
Yes, sir.
Just throwing that in. So, we've all been approached by plastic-free QAC, and we know that in Centerville, they passed an ordinance and they're moving forward with it. I'd like to know if our economic development tourism can do its own survey to see what the rest of the county thinks, business-wise, about that ban?
The plastic free?
On the single-use, uh, plastic-
The bag bans?
Yeah, yeah. So, and we waited this long. It's not a major rush, but I just think if we can incorporate it in the day-to-day, if somebody goes out to a business, you know, maybe have two or three questions and get their responses, and we can tabulate that and maybe look forward on that. What say you, Phil?
I agree. I agree. I mean, you know, this is something that Centerville had done, and I know that Plastic Free Queen Anne's actually surveyed over a hundred people at several different grocery stores to get feedback on what the public's opinion was about this. And then they created the report and the data, and they sent it to us. So, but we truly, and that's a great point, Jim, we want to get the business side of it, and how it affects, you know, their bottom line, how it affects the way that they conduct business, and find out where our local businesses, which are the ones that have to adopt it, their position on it.
Happy to do that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we have the tools.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, moving on. Item number three on pages three through six. This is for the FY twenty-five budget, the four-fifty-seven B match, and our HR department would like to proceed with the implementation of a four-oh-one A match plan to be effective July first of next, of next year, twenty-twenty-five. If you recall, the board approved a recommendation to engage services to develop and implement a four-oh-one A plan last February, and this plan would provide a ten-dollar match per pay period for participants in our four-fifty-seven deferred comp plan. The goal of this program is to increase participation in our plan and enhance retention of employees with less than five years of service. So, VOYAB will be the plan administrator, and the estimated annual cost is between fifty and sixty thousand per year for that.
I move to authorize the director, Director of Human Resources to implement the county four-oh-one A match plan, effective January first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second? We have a motion in a second?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? And I'm sure down the road, the commissioners could increase that to more than ten dollars on the pay period.
Do it right now.
Certainly.
Let's see how many people get on board, and we'll slowly lower down.
We can review this, we can review this annually with our budget process and our Spending Affordability Committee group, so we have opportunities to adjust up or down in that case, yes.
Do we have a percentage of folks that take advantage of it versus don't?
About forty percent.
Take advan-
Beverly, why don't you come up? Yeah, because you're actually the next item as well, so. You're gonna get in trouble with George. Don't make him mad.
I can hear him say-
Yeah, don't get him angry.
Sorry, around thirty-five, forty percent participate, but a lot of them are in the higher years of service, and we're really trying to get some of those in our lower years of service to participate.
So, could we just make it a county policy that you're automatically opt-in unless you opt out?
You are not legally allowed to do that.
Not legally allowed.
Sorry.
It's always the law.
But that's a good question.
That just makes no sense, that the law would stop you from opting in.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it stops you from taking an employee's money.
Right.
No, it's going into their account.
But it's a match.
It's a match.
It's a match, so they better-
So they have to put their money in first, right?
Any other discussion?
It's a good incentive, I think, to get, you know, the new folks to do-
Otherwise, Patrick, we call that a raise. Automatically give a toll.
I'm sure you could use that ten bucks, Jack.
No, that's a pay period. Yeah, that's per pay period.
Per pay period.
You know that?
It's a dollar a day. Come on.
It's up.
Yes. All right. Well, like I said, we're voting on having the Director of Human Resources final approval to implement the four-oh-one A match plan, effective January one, twenty-twenty-five, as outlined above. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Restained? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, commissioners. Stay right there, Beverly. So, item number four on pages seven through thirty-two are some additional updated human resources policies, which include the Family and Medical Leave Act, the meal allowance policy, commercial driver's license, and some payroll procedures. So, can I get a motion on that?
I move that the above stated policy revisions are to be adopted and presented to be effective in the seven business days unless otherwise indicated.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, how many of these actually are mandated by the state? Is this something that we modeled, the state, that they do, or?
So, none of these are mandated by the state. Now, family medical leave is a federal.
Okay. I guess that was my question. How much of these are, we have to do?
The first one, family medical leave.
Okay.
Now, employees do have to have CDL license if they drive a CDL vehicle, so that is actually also federal. We just provide an avenue to help pay for their DOT physically.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, this is, this is a little bit different. I move to adopt the human resources policy revisions for family and medical leave, meal allowance, commercial driver's license, and payroll procedures to be effective in seven days, with the exception of the commercial driver's license provision that will go into effect on January one, twenty-twenty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Okay, commissioners, our next item is item number five on pages thirty-three through thirty-nine, and this is a petition to close a portion of the Kenton Arrows Way North right-of-way. This was filed by Kenton Arrows Development LLC, and they're requesting the small portion of the right-of-way containing about six thousand square feet be petitioned for closing to allow for this area to be added to the abutting property to use as a landscape area and on the overall development of that particular property. So a map of this small area is in your book for review, and we have Mr. Jim DiDonato here to answer any questions about his request.
Good evening. Genevieve McFarland with Stevens Palmer on behalf of Kenton Arrows Development LLC and Mallard Construction Group, and I have Mr. DiDonato with me as well. Essentially, we're here to start the conversation about this petition to close this six-thousand-seventy-one square foot of the northeast portion of Kenton Arrows Way North. The way that the code provision reads is we have to give an intent to give notice, and that gets filed in the newspaper, and then once we file the petition, then there's a separate set of notice requirements. So essentially, today, we're here to give you notice that we intend to file notice and certainly answer any questions that you might have.
So this is similar to what we did a couple meetings ago with Pier One Road Right-of-Way, where we're gonna advertise for the intent to close that portion of the right-of-way and then be dedicated over to the adjacent, or in that case, the enveloping landowner.
And certainly, with your drawings in front of you, Mr. DiDonato can explain what the plan is for that piece of land and why we're doing this.
We have the floor.
Let me make a motion.
You wanna do the motion first?
I move to close the six-thousand-seventy-one square feet of northeast portion of Kenton Arrows Way by abutting Kenton Arrows Development LLC property and proceed with advertisement for the intent to file petition to convey to close portion of the road to Kenton Arrows Development LLC to be maintained as landscape or and water quality management serving lot, too.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, so it's kind of deceiving because it says closed, but not really closing-
Right.
-anything. It's more of a realignment. If you look at the, I think the history, if you look at the, I believe, years ago when the state of Maryland took the land for the over, for the bridge, the Kenton Arrows Bridge, and they just took more land than they probably should have because they turned around and gave it back to the county at some point later. But really, what it does is, we're looking to realign the right-of-way with the road, which is typical at any other road in Queen Anne's County. And really what it does, it really doesn't expand any. It just, it allows us to, a little bit more to better develop the property, and better landscape the property, and better maintain the property, is really what it does. It doesn't really give us any more, it's no more really floor area or anything else, so.
So it's not narrowing the road?
No, it's actually, doesn't narrow the road at all. It actually, the right-of-way, if you look at it, the normal, the right-of-way line would come this way in parallel to the road. It kind of skews out on an angle. It starts over here on the other side of the narrows point, so.
And so basically, so basically, yeah, so basically, by moving that, that line allows them to position the project in a favorable location, but they can't do that unless they have that, that one sliver of property, the six-thousand-seventy-one square feet, in order to make that happen, so.
I'm certainly not asking for any more parking or floor area. It's simply to have that buffer there.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Restained? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, item number six on pages forty through eighty-three. This is a rental agreement for Bay Manor Apartments. This is for two-fourteen Bay Manor. And this agreement is in accordance with our county code. For this project, they have opted to provide six rental and moderately-priced dwelling units, MPDU's, as part of their sixty-unit apartment development. This was a condition the planning commission placed on the approval of their project. The project is complete, and the units are now ready for occupancy, and I believe we do have three that are spoken for already, three of the six.
We got a motion.
Yeah. I'm, I move to execute the agreement to build moderately-priced dwelling units, the moderately-priced dwelling units declaration of covenants for rentals, and the moderately-priced dwelling units MPDU rental offering agreement.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? I think it's pretty cut and dry, they have ten percent.
Yep.
Anybody want anything to add? Questions, comments?
I just, you know, moderately-priced dwelling units are underserved in our community, and when you have a project that's willing to take ten percent of their units and convert those to MPDU's, I think we should look favorably on the fact that they're willing to do that. There's other opportunities they have, fees in lieu of, and that doesn't help with solve our problem. So, all I have to say.
Very good. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Restained? So moved.
All righty. Okay. Thank you, commissioners. Item number seven is the FY twenty-five Community Partnership Agreement. This is an annual agreement that we do each year that kind of basically sets the framework and the budget that we get for the LMB. The LMB then designs the programs via the community needs assessments consistent with our plans and state priorities. So, this year, it's for four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars.
I move to execute the FY twenty-twenty-five Community Partnership Agreement.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Restained? So moved.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. Item number eight on pages one-thirty-three to one-thirty-five. This is a procurement for a replacement for the firewall system for the IT division. The current firewall will not have engineering support for patches and repairs as of this year, and they will not be supported at all at the end of twenty-twenty-five. So, an RFP was issued. The Tenno, Tenno Group provided the lowest responsible bid, has provided firewall services for the county since twenty-thirteen. The overall project, based on their lowest bid, is two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. So the professional services can be covered with the operational budget. We did secure a homeland security grant for thirty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars to apply to that, so that brings the cost down for two years to two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-nineteen dollars.
I move to approve the purchase of a new firewall from the Tenno Group in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-nineteen dollars.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, well, Ms. Delgado's not here.
What do you want to do?
No. Well, I guess my question is, so this Tenno Group, they're the ones that will be updating and then servicing our firewall?
Yeah, they'll provide professional services to help with-
Are they a different company than currently does it now?
They do it now as well.
Okay. So the product that they provided us four or five years ago is no longer supported?
You know how computer stuff is these days.
What kind of support are we gonna get on this one? Like, four years and then-
They don't, they don't provide the product. They're the administrator of the product.
Administrator, right.
It's, somebody else provides the product.
Just amazing to me how much money you spend on these things, and then, and then the serviceability and the support of the, of the product doesn't last very long.
Yeah, but one ransom, one ransom-
Well, I get that. I get that. I know that there was a jurisdiction that I'm sure wants to remain nameless that had their, their systems attacked and had to cost them a whole lot of money to. So I know it's money well spent. I just complaining about the amount of time that they're willing to service it, that's all. That's all I have.
All right. Well, we're voting on to approve the purchase of the new firewall from the Tenco Group in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-nineteen dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Restained? So moved.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. Our final item tonight, action item, is item number nine on page one-thirty-six. This is Budget Amendment CC twenty for the Federal Recovery Funds, ARPA funds, and this budget amendment establishes budget authority, actually moves budget authority in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars over to the Chester Water Main Project to close that out and using ARPA- to the Chester Water Main Project to close that out, and using ARPA funds, it also reduces ARPA funds for two other projects, the Board of Athletic Field Tracks, which is already complete, and the Long Driveaway Fiber Project. And this is really a kind of a redistribution of those funds, so we can have those contractually obligated or spent by the end of this fiscal year, or this calendar year, excuse me, because they have to be obligated and contractually by the end of the year, and exhausted by the end of 2026. So we'll see another amendment for some other projects to, to wrap this up at the next meeting as well.
Very well.
I make a motion to approve Budget Amendment CC dash two zero. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, commissioners, that is all of the action items we have this evening. It is, we are a little ahead of schedule. Our next item is the public hearing on County Ordinance twenty-four oh-nine at six-thirty.
Take five.
Take five.
Take five?
Sure.
Unless you got five minutes of stand-up you want to do for us?
Huh?
Five minutes of stand-up, warm up the audience before the hearing.
Rodney Dangerfield.
No? Okay, we'll take five.
About the horse.
Right, the horse that walks in the barn, right.
What a long face.
No, we, we, I'm sure they would rather have us just take five.
Got to be a point here.
George, we'll take, take five minutes, please.
Yep. Thank you.
Bring it back on. All right. Oh, you want, you want, no.
I want a gavel.
No, no, I'm not doing it.
No gavel.
Okay, we can resume our meeting and go into the legislative portion of the meeting this evening. We have four public hearings. The first public hearing, commissioners, is under legislation, under tab seven, item one, pages one through four. This is Public Hearing on County Ordinance twenty-four oh-nine for short-term rentals, and the intention of this ordinance is for the purpose of regulating short-term rentals, residential rentals, in chapter eighteen of the Code of Public Local Laws of Queen Anne's County. And this was afforded to, by the Planning Commission, they reviewed it and voted four to one to send a favorable recommendation to the county commissioners. So, Mr. Thompson, turn it over to you.
Um, as county administrator mentions, this is a hearing on County Ordinance twenty-four oh-nine, a bill entitled An Act Concerning Short-Term Residential Rentals in Queen Anne's County, for the purpose of regulating short-term residential rentals in Queen Anne's County, revising certain definitions, adding a definition for short-term residential rentals in chapter eighteen-one, app of the Code of Public Local Laws of Queen Anne's County, generally regulating and providing for short-term residential rentals, providing for the location of saying, providing for overnight occupant and guest capacity, regulating amplified music, requiring onsite parking, requiring inspections and zone approvals and zoning certificates for such use, providing special events unless a condition used granted, requiring compliance with the county's hotel rental tax, providing for enforcement of these provisions, and generally dealing with, providing for and regulating short-term residential rentals in Queen Anne's County, by amendment chapter eighteen, app one, and adding section eighteen-one, fifty-eight J to the Code of Public Local Laws of Queen Anne's County. The proposed ordinance received a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission at their September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. The hearing being held Tuesday, October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, six thirty P.M., the county commissioners meeting in Liberty Building, one oh seven North Liberty Street, Centerville, Maryland, copies of proposed ordinance and available county commissioners' office, or Department of Planning and Zoning, one ten Vincent Street, Centerville, during regular business hours, or online on the county website. Speakers will be limited to three minutes, three minutes each, written testimony of any length can be submitted on or before the hearing date to the county commissioners. All hearing sites are accessible to individuals with disabilities, sign lags, and turbulences and assistive listening systems are available. Part of the record of the proceeding, via certificate of publication and the county notice of the night's hearing, were published in the Baytown, Drakken Observer, newspapers of general circulation in Queen Anne's County for two consecutive weeks prior to the night's hearing. Various emails have been received and will be part of the record, and considered by the county commissioners, and there are memos from Stephanie Jones relating to the proposed ordinance, and a memorandum from the Economic Development Commission. People who've signed up, first is Bob Bateman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I submitted through email.
Send your name and address.
Okay, so I'll just go on with that. I'd just like to say there's two major goals of what I submit to you, that is, one, to increase Queen Anne County revenue off the, off the use of short-term rentals in this county, and also to reduce the burden on county resources. And by that, I mean, very simply stated, anyone who's running an LLC as the owner of a short-term rental in this county, who is a non-county resident, say Montgomery County or Antoona County, that's who's getting the revenue reported on their income tax in the state of Maryland, so they're paying county taxes on Maryland, on business, if you want to call it that, short-term rental activity in this county. Does that make sense? In other words, if you're an LLC, you're a pass-through entity, so LLC income is claimed on the person's personal income. So, like in my community, I'm Bob Bateman, one thirty-three Tanners Point Drive, I forgot to do that, I'm sorry, Stevensville. We have an LLC, the person who owns the LLC lives in Montgomery County, he makes a hundred thousand dollars a year in SCR income. Guess who benefits from that? Montgomery County, not Queen Anne's County, yet he's conducting that here in this county. And related to that, my second point would be about, how it's worded, about the property manager or home, home, it says, the property manager or homeowner must be within twenty-five miles. What must, what must be within twenty-five miles? They just have to be at the mall? What about Talbot County? Language says their home or office, the property manager or homeowner, home or office must be within twenty-five miles. I think we can do better as a county by saying that the homeowner or property manager, this is point number two, should be a Queen Anne's County resident and within twenty-five miles. That's very important. We have experience in my community where what happens is, these people that live in western shore counties in particular, with these LLCs running SCRs in this county, they don't come across that bridge when there's a nuisance trouble, or noise, or complaints, or all these other things. Guess what they do? They call the county sheriffs. The county sheriffs are acting like an extension of property managers. I don't think our county sheriffs care to be in that business, really. They have better things to do, I would think. So my suggestion is that, that the property manager homeowner be within twenty-five miles and a QAC resident, or at least twenty-five miles. Matter of fact, it's a true fact that the people, some of the property managers of STRs in our community have actually called the sheriff's department on their own clients, because they can't get across the bridge, or they just don't care to get there. So be careful with what we're going to put the burden of, unless you tighten up the twenty-five miles thing and change that language just a little bit, to make sure that people are more local, and I see my time is up, I'll let that go. But the main point is about this tax revenue. I don't think people would want to build up LLC Daisy Chain houses throughout this, our communities, and they live outside of this county, Montgomery County, PG, wherever they live, get the benefit of that. I, I'd like to see that money stay in Queen Anne's County. Thank you. Thank you.
Person signed up, Kevin Tracy.
Commissioners, good evening. My name's Kevin Tracy. I bought the property where I live in two thousand and seven, been a resident since two thousand and nine, and I have submitted extensive information to the commissioners, to counsel for the county, and have had multiple conversations with the department as well on this issue. And primarily, tonight, I want to, I submitted proposed changes last week, two proposed changes, and the information that I've submitted focuses on the fact that the STRs can be incidental to homeownership, can be an occasional rental, you know, adjunct to somebody's owning a home, and they can also be commercial operations. And personally, I don't think it's appropriate to have these commercial STRs in residential zones. I've also submitted information about the nuisance that these STRs can be, but I want to start primarily with the first proposed change that I sent in last week, and it has to do with homeowners associations, condominium associations, communities with covenants that are not necessarily an association. And I think that the, the ordinance should be explicit that these covenants and community rules control and, and are not superseded by this ordinance. The objection that I've been told multiple times by the department is that the department does not want to be in the business of evaluating covenants and enforcing covenants, and I agree with that sentiment, and I don't think they should be in that position. I will note that Talbot County, their, their bill, their ordinance requires an applicant to certify, to, to notify the county that if there's a HOA, and then the HOA gets notice and an opportunity to be heard at a hearing, a special exception hearing. Montgomery County requires the HOAs to be identified, and they get notice and an opportunity to be heard, but it also requires the applicant to certify that the use is not prohibited by those HOA rules. And what I've simply proposed is, is the latter, is that the applicant certify that the use is not prohibited by a covenant, by an HOA rule, and that the county has no role in interpreting or enforcing that covenant, but, A, it gives the homeowner or the HOA, the neighbors, leverage and, and, and notice to everybody involved what the rules are, and then their ability to go into court and enforce that covenant themselves, in light of somebody who misrepresents the reality in the application. The, I think that's a very simple rule that imposes no burden on the county resources, and it is consistent with what other counties have done. My time's about to expire, I've submitted information about how these uses can be nuisances, as well as how they can be commercial, and I hope that the commissioners consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Miller?
Good evening, everybody. I am here tonight with several of our neighbors here in Love Point to express our concerns about the short-term rental properties that are springing up all over Love about the short-term rental properties that are springing up all over Love Point. Specifically now, there are four. When we moved, my husband and I moved to the area, there was one. Now we have a specific concern addressing the short-term rental property located at three oh five Love Point Avenue. Since this particular property began operating, there have been several issues that have negatively impacted the quality of life for residents such as ourselves. One, traffic, the short-term rental has led to markedly increase in traffic in our neighborhood. There are multiple cars parked on the street, and guests frequently come and go at all hours of the day and night. It's made it very difficult for residents such as ourselves to park our own vehicles on the street, and it's created a safety hazard. In addition, there are medically vulnerable children that live on the road at this Love Point Avenue, and these children face a very busy, one-lane road to play in with cars not upholding the strict speed limit sign that we had posted in the road, as well as traffic cones that we've put up to try to slow the traffic coming in there. Secondly, the number of guests that we see in this particular property is of concern. They have seen, we have seen many, many, many new people come into our neighborhood, weekends, during the week. It's led to noise and disturbances and an increase in trash and litter. The property is often rented by very large groups, some in excess of fifty people, and these groups often engage in loud and disruptive behavior. And then lastly, the noise from the short-term rental has been a concern for all of us. Guests stay up late, they party, the noise from their conversation, and music and laughter can be heard throughout the neighborhood. It makes it very difficult sometimes to sleep, or to even feel comfortable, because you just don't know who's in your neighborhood anymore. We fully, as a group, support the ordinance of twenty-four dash oh nine in full, that is currently up for vote. I have had numerous neighbors sign a petition, letting you all know that we are in favor, that the commission is attempting to assuage some of these points that I've made and that we have made.
If you want to give that petition to...
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bob Morelli. I'm the president of Cloverfield's largest HOA in Queen Anne's County. I asked the commissioners before they had this planning commission to invite us or to get input from us when they were planning on doing this, and never heard a word from them, from you guys. Does this override the HOA ordinances that we have already, the bylaws? We went to court two or three times, and the circuit court says they don't consider this a business, but if you're making money, to me, it's a business. I'm just worried about more and more of these moving into our HOA against our bylaws. I just wanted to know what, if you guys are going to actually override the bylaws, and if there's something we need to do to change the bylaws or the restrictions. That's my question. Like I said, I requested a meeting with you guys and never heard nothing, so.
Thank you. That's all the people who've signed up. If anyone else has any public comment on county ordinance twenty-four oh nine.
Can we bring Stephanie up? Yeah, why? Can we bring Stephanie up? You had a couple questions.
Yeah. Me, Miles will come on up. We're going to close the public comment section, but you guys might want to give a more in-depth explanation of the ordinance and...
Specifically, right now, the question that's asked about the HOAs, is the ordinance protect the HOAs and keep the county out of the HOA business?
The HOA covenants and restrictions are totally separate from county laws.
So this will not supersede any HOA?
They're enforceable by the homeowners association or the neighbors, but the county has never gotten in the business of enforcing.
Right.
HOA regulations.
But we don't supersede their authority.
When the use is still permitted, and it would be an enforceable action through the HOA?
Okay. So unless the HOA changed their covenants and bylaws, the county, we'd say it's approved, but it's really not?
Correct.
I mean, assuming the HOA rules prohibit...
Right, that's what I'm saying. If they prohibit it, even though we're saying it's a permitted use or that you can, the HOA is basically overriding what the county is saying, so, okay. Because I know that was a question I got several times.
It happens a lot with backyard chicken provisions.
You want to give us a little...
Do you want me to run through the ordinance and that be a quick synopsis of it? Okay. So the intent here of this ordinance is really to address short-term rentals in the county, really to address the safety, you know, the neighborhood kind of nuisances, protection of the existing neighborhoods. So just running through the ordinance, like they had mentioned, it is permitted, it would be permitted in all zoning districts and all dwelling units within the county. There would be a requirement that the owner or the property manager be within twenty-five miles of the property itself, and the intent of that is because we've been working with a consultant in order to assist on the backhand of this and enforcement portion of it, so that's just a reason for that twenty-five mile radius. There also would be occupancy and guest capacity numbers that would be allowed in these short-term rentals. It breaks it down between public sewer and then if you're on septic, really just because of the, you know, intent of being on sewer and septic. Obviously, the septic systems can't support as much as a sewer. Also, guests should not be, if there are guests, but they're not overnight occupants, they have to vacate by eleven P. M. Outdoor amplified music must be discontinued by eight o'clock. Parking must be all onsite, so they can't be parking on the street. The property owner does have to receive a zoning certificate annually, so it would be a permit that's submitted to the county on a yearly basis. They also, within that requirement, the first, the first application, the county would do the inspection, the next, for the next five years, the short-term rental applicant would be able to submit an affidavit to the county indicating that they've addressed all of what would be inspected, and that's basically to assist with that, you know, not going out and having to inspect all the time every year.
Are we going to, are we going to consider the possibility of random audits on the certificates that are filed to make sure that they're in compliance? I mean, is that, I mean, if they're allowed after the first year to submit an affidavit saying that they've dotted their i's and crossed their t's, there's got to be some checks and balances to make sure...
So on the fifth year, the county would then do the inspection?
Okay.
So it gives them a kind of like a rotating cycle.
But the next step that Stephanie will talk about kind of deals with the bad players and the players where we receive complaints, and so there is a separate path if we should receive complaints on a...
And then the zoning certificate, like I said, is an annual inspection. The special events, which is a particular use, it's a conditional use, which is, addresses those, you know, weddings, big parties, you can't have them through this approval of a short-term rental, you'd have to get your additional special events conditional use approval on its own if you're intending to do that onsite.
Is there a time, is there a number, for instance?
How many they could have?
The special events?
Well, if somebody's having a wedding for their daughter and they're in their own backyard, do they need to get a special event?
So the special events does, like you said, indicate a number of events that you can have. I think if you're a resident of that property, I think we would probably, and it's for someone that's living in that house.
Yeah, that doesn't fall under the, so we have very specific provisions under the conditional use standards as to what a special event is, and a family event doesn't qualify as a special event. A special event is a recurring event where you're advertising to bring in parties, weddings, reunions.
And then also, they do have to register the use with the finance office, which will then collect that hotel tax. But then, one of the biggest portions of this ordinance that we have drafted is the enforcement portion, so really the intent of this ordinance is to go out and be able to apply enforcement to these uses. What it does is it gives, we are allowed to then suspend, revoke, or not renew a zoning certificate for a short-term rental. And how that goes, we go about that is then we can hold it for three years, we do not have to renew it if there's enforcement issues. So if there's complaints filed with the county, we would take it on a case-by-case basis, but we can revoke that approval, and they would not be able to have a short-term rental at that point in time. So, and then, basically, also, there is a right of entry of the county, so at any time that there is these complaints, it does give us the allowance to go out and do an inspection or see what might be the issue.
So I'm going to throw a scenario at you and just tell me how this works, because what's if there's a healthy party going on up at Love Point, and it's ten-thirty at night, and there's loud music, and are the residents there calling some one-eight-hundred number, are they calling a specific number? How do they get that number, and then...
At ten-thirty at night.
Right, and who responds at ten-thirty at night?
So we're working on that process with the consultant we're working with, Granicus Host Compliance is the actual, I guess, application that we've been working with. What they would do is we would post the number, so we're going to say it's on the weekend, right? So the one-eight-hundred number would be posted on the county website. They would be able to call and file a complaint, but they also would be able to make a complaint online, so they wouldn't have to actually call, but they can also online, I think they can submit pictures, videos, so there's other means of, multiple means of submitting an enforcement action or a complaint. And then on Monday, what happens when they call that one-eight-hundred number? Basically, it's the Granicus hotline that picks up and asks what the problem is. If it's something that can be addressed by Granicus, they will call then the property owner, and that's the importance of that twenty-five mile radius, to kind of basically say, okay, you have an issue at your property, you need, and then what Granicus will say is you need to address this problem, and if it's not rectified, then we will be notified of both instances, whether it is rectified or not, obviously on Monday when the office is open, but also Granicus will call the person that complained and let them know whether it's been addressed or not through the, you know, the short-term rental applicant or property owner.
I mean, I just see this as something at ten-thirty at night, it's going to be eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock before there's any type of resolve to it, so what does that lead the county into now there's violation, obvious violation? What happens?
So on Monday when we come in, this host compliance application we have will store all the short-term rentals that has identified them, we know where they are, the locations, then it will basically indicate and it will basically, I guess, track all these complaints. It will hold the complaints in the online file, we'll be able to review it, we'll know whether there's been previous complaints, the number of complaints, but then we can follow up locally as opposed to Granicus following up, kind of like in the immediate sense on the weekend.
So it's ten-thirty, the party's raging, if they were to call the police department, the sheriff's office with this new ordinance, would he have teeth to go in there and shut it down?
Yep, so they can, what Granicus will do, will provide the sheriff's office number if it wasn't addressed to the property owner, the property owner can call that number, speak with someone onsite when they will go out and address, if it is something that they can address in importance, they will go out and address it.
So there's, obviously, a fee involved with this third-party operator? Okay, so with these violations, I mean, I know we're with a certain number of violations, we're pulling their ability to operate, is there fines involved to help? Not this is necessarily going to be a revenue generator, but certainly it's got to address some of the internal costs that the county is going to absorb.
Yeah, I think we would apply. Like I said, it'll depend, it'll be a case-by-case, but depended on the number of, you know, enforcement actions or the number of complaints we receive. I do know there are counties that do insert a, basically a fee for having that, having that will occur. We do not in this ordinance, but I have seen it in others that have stated, you know, you pay this much if...
Right.
Do we have a record of how many folks have reported?
Yes.
What is that?
Through the finance office.
No, no, no. How many, how many times have police have been called for disruptive?
Oh, no, we don't have that, and we don't have that data.
Any of that?
We do have, in the last five years, we do have a record of how many complaints that we have received about short-term rentals.
But not a specific short-term rental, just...
Specific properties.
Oh, okay.
There have been two.
Two?
Two.
Where the police were called?
I don't know if the police were called, two that we have received and the department.
You'd have to go to the sheriff's department to get that information, they wouldn't have...
Yeah.
But with the ordinance, you'll now be able to track all that?
Yeah, this is more enforcement than we have for all of our other land uses, so this is an after-hour resource, this is a weekend resource. We have an assurance through this company who provides this service throughout the country that, you know, there is, what's valuable about this is that they reach out directly to the owner as a first line of defense, and if that fails, addressing the concern about putting this burden on our sheriff's department, if that fails, then, you know, public disturbance complaint is then handed over to them, but this does allow the homeowner or the property manager to address it, to be aware of it, because they're going to know when they get a building permit about these enforcement steps and about the jeopardy such complaints would place, the longevity of their zoning certificate.
To follow up on yours, I think, and I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, what you were looking at is immediate mitigation of the, when it's happening at ten-thirty at night, right? Getting some semblance of confidence that's going to happen. What I don't like, and to one of the comments we had, and I think we should apply it, we don't have to be like everybody else, is that anybody who, forget that twenty-five miles, whoever scot those going on in Queen Anne's County, you have to have a qualified agent in Queen Anne's County, somebody who lives in Queen Anne's County, because the bridge gets backed up a lot, and I don't care if you're five miles away, it could still take you an hour and a half, two hours, and our citizens shouldn't be inconvenienced by that. There's no reason we can't force, especially the LLCs, to have a qualified agent here in Queen Anne's that can get to the site and try to mitigate it as quickly as possible. So I'd like to see something along those lines put in there. And then, no, I'd love to do the taxes, unfortunately, that knife cuts both ways, and we have people here that take money from other counties too, so, as much as I'd like to do that one, I know that one's not really going to get any teeth, but, yeah, I would definitely like to see, I agree with the point about being across the bridge, or being in Delaware, or being wherever, and not having somebody here local.
You know, this is our first stab at this, and honestly, we can come back next year, the year after, and see what's working, what's not working, and tweak it and get it to where we need it to be. And, you know, we're not casting a net trying to stop the short-term rentals, we're casting a net to stop those that are abusing the short-term rentals to the point where they're disrupting all the homeowners and the citizens of Queen Anne's County. You know, we're in a changing times. I mean, you know, I think that we're seeing more and more people coming across the bridge to buy homes for investments, either as long-term rental or the short-term. And we just want to make sure that the people that have been living there for twenty years or fifteen years, whatever, you know, their quality of life doesn't diminish because somebody's trying to make money off of a rental. So, you know, I think that's the painstaking portion, but Granicus also, let's share how many, how many short-term rentals Queen Anne's County has?
And this is as of the summer, so it might be a little different, but there's a total of a hundred and eighty-one.
Hundred and eighty-one homes. 181 homes with, with short-term rentals in them. And but, you know, again, we're hearing from three to five of them. And, you know, those, those people that live there, you know, and I think, I hate to point out Love Point, but they're here, you know, now, you know, they'll be able to call somebody and get some relief from that, and, you know, hopefully, the owner of that property will say, look, if you're coming, don't think it's gonna be, you know, the keg's outside and the music's on all night long, because, you know, that's not gonna happen. So, you know, I'd love to see this thing stronger, tighter, but I'm willing to say, you know, I think we're at a good starting point. And let's see what the reaction is that we get from the neighbors. Let's see what the reaction we get from Granicus, and let's see, you know, where this leads us in some sort of enforcement. And then, then we gotta get the message out. We gotta get it out to the realtors, we gotta get it out to all the homeowners. The realtors need to be, you know, somebody coming in to buy property, they need to understand that, don't think you're gonna come in here and use it for a party venue. And I would tell every homeowners' association out there, put this in your covenants, put this in your bylaws right now, and, you know, to stop this, because it's coming. You know, it's like changes that normally occur, it's coming.
Commissioner, our HOA, where we live, did exactly what you just said.
Right, yeah.
They got, they had a uncomfortable situation, and they changed their bylaws.
Yep.
If I, if I may.
Sure.
Any members of the council, short-term rental people, do they run any short-term?
Yes, I do. So that makes me selfish, I guess, huh?
Not necessarily.
So.
Not necessarily, it's all good.
To, to her point, I had a, I had a conversation with our counterpart in Garrett County, where I own my house. And I've had a short-term rental for 20 years. Without the short-term rentals, I wouldn't have been able to afford the house. But here's the key, and here's the key. When I, when I met, when I talked to my counterpart, I said, how is it that you, that Garrett County has hundreds? I mean, they're approaching 1,000 rental houses. All of them are short-term rentals, a week to, weekend to weekend. And the key is property management. And none of us live there, but the property manager is right there in McHenry, and they control everything. So to your true story, they call, they call the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department has a list of all of the short, of all of the rentals. They go, oh, that's Caldwell Banker. So then, they call Caldwell Banker, and they say, you go take care of this problem, so that the sheriff doesn't have to put out the fires. And it just seems to work really well. In 20 years, I've had two problems, because the property managers immediately take care of the parties. And, and, I see you got 18 on here, you cannot rent a house unless you're 25 years old. And it's one car per bedroom. So you could have a mansion, but if they, you can only have five cars. So I'm just saying, I'm just telling you the way they're, the way it works. Now, the tax part, I'm not 100% sure about. I, I'm not, I know I pay a lot of taxes, but I don't know if.
Who's receiving the revenue?
Yeah, well.
Queen Anne's is.
Well, they're obviously receiving property taxes from, from us.
Right.
But I don't know if there's a fee on top of that.
Yeah, the drink come taxes paid at Queen Anne's, so, anyway.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're gonna hold this out for?
Yeah, we leave it open for two weeks, see if we can, anything else new and useful comes to us, and we'll vote at the next commissioner meeting.
And thank you very much for all your hard work in writing this ordinance and addressing those issues and concerns.
Next commissioner's meeting will be in three weeks.
Three weeks, right.
It's been some time coming, and Chris was actually a big help with it before his passing, so he should get some credit too.
Any amendments gotta go back to planning commission?
Substantive amendments.
Okay, so my qualified agent would not be, we can make that one on the. Yeah, okay, all right. And then I have to find something else for you to work on as soon as this is done.
We have a list already.
Door doesn't open every time I come down yanking it, I can't.
Jim Lee-Hurley, she's got a big one coming up. You don't need any more right now. They see you coming on security cameras, and they just start locking doors.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
All right, onward and upward.
All right, commissioners, our second public hearing of this evening is for county ordinance 24-13, indoor shooting ranges. And the intent of this text amendment county ordinance is to define the indoor shooting range use and add door, add indoor shooting ranges as a permitted use within the county, in the urban, commercial, suburban, industrial, airport protection, Kent Island Gateway, and the SI Business Employment Districts. The planning commission did review this and voted unanimously to send a recommendation favoring this text amendment ordinance. And they did clarify and recommend that the indoor shooting range must be located a minimum of 100 feet from any residential use.
So.
This is a hearing being held on county ordinance 2413, a bill entitled an act concerning indoor shooting ranges in Queen Anne's County, for the purpose of providing the definition for shooting range indoor, providing that indoor shooting ranges are permitted uses in the urban, commercial district, the suburban, industrial district, the airport protection in Kent Island Gateway District, and the suburban, industrial, business employment district in Queen Anne's County, providing that such use shall not be located within 100 feet of any residential use, and otherwise, defining, regulating, and addressing indoor shooting ranges in Queen Anne's County. I amend in section 18, AP 1, section 18, 122, 18, 123, 18, 134, and 18, 135, the Code of Public Local Laws of Queen Anne's County. The opposed ordinance received a favorable recommendation from the planning commission at their September 12, 2024 meeting. The hearing is being held Tuesday, October 22, at 6:35 in the County Commissioner's Meeting Room, Liberty Building, 107 North Liberty Street, Central, Maryland. Cops of the ORS have been available to County Commissioners's Office, Department of Planning and Zoning, during regular business hours and online on the county website. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Written testimony of any length may be submitted on or for the hearing to the county commissioners. All hearing sites are accessible to individuals with disability. Disability, sign language, and turbulence, and assistive listening systems are available. And the person that got signed up is Ferris Butler.
Good evening. I promised not to take my three minutes. As most of you know, I've been a resident of Queen Anne's County since 2010. In fact, this gentleman right here built my house after I lost both my legs to an IED in Iraq. He teamed up, Jim teamed up with Homes for Our Troops and helped me come to this fantastic community. However, one thing that I've longed for is a shooting facilities. I've been an avid shooting sports enthusiast all my life, along with my wife, and, you know, it seemed like everywhere I lived, there was an outlet to do that. As most of you know, my wife and I spent an exorbitant amount of time paying back the debt of gratitude we owed the nonprofits that helped us by hosting Sporting Clay's fundraisers at Penn Tail Point, which doesn't do anything for Queen Anne's County, clearly. So I just wanted to come tonight and commend Queen Anne's County for recognizing the need to change this, bring this legislation, legislation to bear, and hope to see a facility of this nature in Queen Anne's County. As a veteran, a supporter of the Second Amendment, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Is there any other public comment with respect to county ordinance 2413? All right. I should have mentioned that part of the record of proceeding will be a certificate of publication. And gain a notice of this nice hearing was published for two successive weeks in the Bay Times and Record Observer, newspapers of general circulation in Queen Anne's County.
Hold that again.
Yep, we'll close the comment, and we'll hold this till our next meeting in three weeks. Somebody, Sodin, wants to make a motion tonight?
I'll leave it open.
I mean, I'm good. Keep it open. Yeah, okay, okay. So am I, but.
What do you want, keep it open?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Next one?
All right.
This is a hearing being held on county ordinance 2414, a bill entitled an act concerning impact fees on farm employee dwellings constructed on land subject to conservation easement for the purpose of exempting farm employee dwellings from impact fees on property subject to certain conservation easements, defining types of conservation easements qualified for such exemption, and generally dealing with and clarifying the imposition of impact fees with respect to farm employee dwellings. I amend in section 18, 3-5, D1C, of the Code of Public Local Laws of Queen Anne's County. The ordinance received a favorable recommendation from the planning commission at their September 12, 2024 meeting. Hearing being held Tuesday, October 22, at 6:40 PM, County Commissioner's Meeting Room, Liberty Building, 107 North Liberty Street, Central, Maryland. Cops of the ORS have been available to County Commissioners's Office, Department of Planning and Zoning, during normal business hours and online at the county website. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Written testimony of any length can be submitted on or for the hearing date to the county commissioners. All hearing sites are accessible to individuals with disabilities, sign language, turbulence, and assistive listening systems are available. Part of the record of proceeding will be a certificate of publication, indicating a notice of the hearing was published for two successive weeks in the Bay Times, Record Observer, newspapers of general circulation in Queen Anne's County. I'd have anyone sign up. Is there anybody here who has a public comment with respect to county ordinance 2414?
We'll close that comment and hold it for three weeks, next meeting.
One more?
One more. You're on the roll, Mr. Thompson, please proceed.
All right. This is the hearing being held on proposed county ordinance 2416, a bill entitled an act concerning the Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission in Queen Anne's County, for the purpose of establishing the Queen Anne's County Local Management Board as a Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission to oversee the use of funds pursuant to the State of Maryland Cannabis Reform Act of 2023, providing for the duties of the Community Reinvestment and Repair Commission, establishing a special revenue fund, and finding permitted uses of funding, by adding a new Article 6 to Chapter 4, and a new Article 10 to Chapter 5, the City Coffee Club laws of Queen Anne's County. This hearing is being held Tuesday, October 22, 2024, 6:45 PM, in the County Commissioner's Meeting Room. Cops of the ORS have been available to County Commissioners's Office, Department of Planning and Zoning, and the county website. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Written testimony of any length can be submitted on or for the hearing date to the county commissioners. All hearing sites are accessible to individuals with disabilities, sign language, turbulence, and assistive listening systems are available. Part of the record of proceeding will be a certificate of publication, indicating a notice of the hearing was published for two successive weeks prior to the night's hearing in the Bay Times, Record Observer, and newspapers of general circulation in Queen Anne's County. No one sign up. Is there anybody here who has a public comment with respect to county ordinance 2416?
Close, closing that one too. Hold it for three weeks, next meeting.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Thompson. That concludes our legislative session, commissioners. For this evening, all four ordinances and hearings, we have a press and public comment.
Would you like to speak?
Just have a comment off the record, if I can.
Sure.
I'm not sure what good these laws are doing, because our bylaws, the code, those are really tight. But when we go to court, the judge, she, she basically says, she don't think an Airbnb is a business. You know, our restrictions say no business is allowed in, in, in the community. And we spent thousands, tens of thousands of dollars fighting this whipper, but there's only one certain judge. And no matter what we said, no matter what the judge says, it's her word. We said we're gonna take it to the appeals court. She said, what's that gonna do? Because they're gonna sit and write back to her, and her mind's made up. I mean, we got a thousand houses in Cloverfield, and, I mean, what else can we do? I mean, you made these, you passed this new law of ordinance. Does she go and enforce that, or is she gonna say, nah, I'm not gonna do nothing about that?
You're confusing.
No, I'm not confused.
You're confusing two different things. You're trying to say that a rental, a short-term rental or a long-term rental is a commercial use. The judge is telling you that's not so. That's a residential use, just like renting a farm, renting a field for farming doesn't make that a commercial use. It's still agricultural use. The county ordinance, well, the judge will enforce it, or she won't enforce it, but it doesn't have anything to do with her interpretation of what is a commercial use. I mean, your covenant.
But my question to you around that was, with the Airbnb, is that gonna be a business or commercial license that they have to give? If so, that's against our restrictions. If it's a residential use?
Not according to Judge Knight, I think.
That's right. But I'm asking the commissioners, they've, they've entered this new law of this new ordinance, what are they using it for? Is it an Airbnb? Is it a short-term business, or is it a short-term rental as to residential? I mean, they're making money off of it, so.
We, we are saying in that, in that ordinance that we are allowing the short-term rentals with caveats, that they, they're not gonna disrupt their neighbors. Basically, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for those that are causing the problems, not those that are, that are renting their homes in, in a respectable manner that's not causing any problems to the community. We're not after that. We're after those that are, that are causing problems in the community. And I think to your, to your point, you're trying to say that it's a commercial use, it's a business, and I understand what you're trying to say, but that's not the fight that we're taking up at that time. We're not, we're not saying we're gonna choose between which is a business and which is not a business. We're choosing to say we're gonna allow it, but we're gonna allow it with rules and regulations.
I would also say to that gentleman, the lawyer's point, most of these are not commercial. They're not, they're not LLCs. They're not sole proprietors. They're what you just said.
Well, the commercial aspect could be if they're doing it every weekend, all year long, that's commercial.
But that doesn't mean that, that they register it as an LLC.
Correct.
Or, or a commercial property.
Correct, that's right. But again.
So wait, if it's still residential use, I think that's what, where you're, it's residential use that you're making money on doesn't make it commercial, unfortunately. It, it doesn't. If you have an LLC and you have like 10 properties under that LLC, then that is now a commercial business. So if you have somebody in your community right now that has multiple properties that's operating under an LLC, then Judge Knight will side with you, because then that is against your covenants and bylaws. But if you have just somebody that's renting their house out as a short-term rental, that's a residential use, it's not a commercial use. So that's why.
The commissioners was saying, make sure your bylaws is tight.
Correct.
I mean, we've done all this.
Well, they could, they could, they could cut STRs out of their community if they wanted to, through their HOA. You could say, no STRs in your community, regardless, residential or commercial. You could set that up.
STRs, I'm sorry.
Short-term rental, I'm sorry.
Short-term rentals, right.
Yeah, we get a lot of acronyms.
Well, I think that's his point, when, if they were trying to do that.
They said commercial.
They went to the judge.
No, he said commercial. They didn't say all short-term rentals. He just, they, they, no commercial businesses.
Now, our restriction says nothing under 60 days for Airbnbs. That's, that's what's in the restrictions and conditions.
Then she should be upholding that, because that's, that's the, that should be upholding it. I don't.
No, no, that's the point I'm trying to make. Like I said, we spent tens of thousands of dollars, and when we said we wanted to take it to the appeals court, she said the appeals court just kicks it back to her. So, I mean, why spend more than $30,000, $40,000 fighting this if we only have one person who can put the favor on any, any county?
Can I ask you a question, just real quick? Do you have an existing Airbnb right now?
Yes.
In Cloverfield?
Yes.
You have just one?
One.
Okay.
Are they, is it troublesome?
Are they, is it troublesome?
Sometimes. All the feedback are neighbors from them.
And, and did they call the sheriff?
They, they called the sheriff.
But was he able to?
But now this law will give them an outlet.
So this ordinance hopefully will give that long.
This will give you a place to start to have some teeth against them from being bad actors.
Again, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if this is actually going to have any teeth, what you guys doing or she's just going to say, nah, do whatever you guys want. So. There's only places. We got a thousand homes. It's hard for me to say you can have an Airbnb or you can't, or this or this. You know, everybody should be on the same sheet of music now.
We'll see. All right. Thanks, Pat.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here.
Thank you. All right, roundtable. Who wants to go first?
Actually, the commissioners, we do have just.
You're going to go first.
Yes.
All right.
Uh, we have one email that came in, um, concerning the Chester Haven development. I just wanted you to talk about, um, Chris Dragan.
There we go. Sorry about that. Chester Haven. Dear Commissioners, I strongly object to entertaining any site plan approval for development in designated critical areas throughout Queen Anne's County. We pass these laws, ordinances, and restrictions for a good reason, to preserve our natural heritage and rural legacy. This is simply bad planning and an overreach on the developer's part. Thank you for your time and consideration. That was from Peter Pinkard of Queenstown. And then we had ten emails that came in basically just saying that they're very excited to hear about the QAC, Community Recreation Center that you guys are deciding on or it's going to be going through. Um, and it's just varying that they're just excited. It's going to be a place for the kids, a place to play pickleball, just general excitement for it. So that was it.
Very well. Patrick, you want to go first?
No.
Okay. You want to go at all?
You gotta go when, when the president tells you to go.
El Presidente. Uh, property manager is the key to this.
Yeah.
So, uh, yesterday was just an incredible day for not just Queen Anne's County. I don't want to steal your thunder.
No, no.
You've been involved in this a lot longer than me.
You're fine. Go ahead.
But, uh, it was just remarkable day for the whole shore. And, uh, I remember golfing with, uh, Kevin Stately, who is a general surgeon in the nineties. And he was on the board to build a new hospital. And he's like eighty now. So it's, that was, I don't know, ninety-five, whatever, ninety-six. So it's been a long time coming. And, uh, as we spoke, the, the, a, a step that we need to talk about, not right now, but in the next few months, is how can we, as a, as a regional group, counties, attract top-notch physicians, surgeons, cancer specialists, oncologists, OBGYN, et cetera, et cetera. And we're just going to have to talk about that and deal with it. And, uh, we lost a, we lost a patriot and, uh, she was special and boy, was she tough too. She would put you in your place and tell you what, what needs to be done. And a few things that I learned from Diana was, uh, to be a team player. And I remember two things, if I can, uh, this is probably twenty years ago. We were on opposite sides, uh, of a candidate. And, and the day after the election, she called me up and said, I'm ready to go. I said, what do you mean? She goes, it's time to come together and move forward and, and get our candidate elected. So I learned a lot from that. And the other thing is, uh, the last time I saw her, the second to last time I saw her, I was at Deep Creek. I was in Oakland, Maryland, walking into a Sheetz. And across the gas stations, I hear, hey, Patrick! And it was Diana. And, um, uh, we, we met, embraced, and I said, what are you doing in Deep Creek? In, uh, in, in Garrett County? And she said, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to an event to, uh, for, for the Republican Party.
She got around.
She, I mean, she was amazing, you know? She, this is only a few months ago. This is, I'm going to say either, I, I don't remember when it was, but, um, she just was a team player and wanted to make our country better and our state better and.
She did.
She did.
Yeah.
She did. She was a, she was a leader and a champion.
You gotta give us one more plug. What's going on Thursday?
Well, uh, how much time we got?
Well, just let me tell the public what, what's going on real quick and how we're, how we're trying to move that forward.
Well, under Moran and Mon and Wilson and these guys, we're meeting, uh, with, we're meeting at Chestertown Hospital with Ken Cozel. And we verified, right? Who is the president of the Eastern Shore University of Maryland. And with Brook Lane, which is a rural mental health hospital system that has been in business for eighty years. And their whole existence is to help kids, uh, not hurt themselves or hurt other people. And under Dr. Siatola and Bill Webb and Ronnie Fithian's leadership, we are very optimistic about being able to get the third floor of the Chestertown Hospital to try to create a, um, a short-term youth crisis stabilization center for kids that are trying to hurt themselves. And, uh, it's very exciting.
Very much so.
And then, uh, we've got the other Witsit Center apart, which is what Congressman Harris is funding for five million dollars. So we're just trying to see where it goes. We're going to see if Brook Lane is interested. Even if they say no, it doesn't mean that we can't move forward. It's just, uh, a possibility. I actually talked to Dr. C today, uh, Dr. Siatola, and, um, he said, when he spoke with Ken Cozel today, that he doesn't think that, that there would be an issue with occupation. In other words, there's really nobody up there. They have a aging, uh, um, program, but that's mainly on the first or second floor. So, very exciting. We'll see, we'll know a lot more at twelve o'clock on Thursday. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Great job.
Well, it's.
Well, it's been a passionate year since the very beginning.
It's everybody. No, no, no. It's really these guys and, and.
It wasn't you. It was all me, Patrick.
That's right. And Chris said McLaughlin. But Bill Webb and, and Shel- and, and Shelley Heller and, and it, it's really six, six counties. Uh, Breeding, uh, Chuck, Chuck Cali- you know, the list goes on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Very good.
Thank you, sir.
All righty. You're good. All right. Phil Lee?
So we had the, um, the ribbon cutting for the skate park and I, uh, was joined by my fellow commissioner, Patrick McLaughlin, and, um, and Commissioner Corcorino. Uh, pretty exciting. I think it's safe to say that if anybody drives by there at any given time on, on Love Point Road and looks to the right, it's, um, it's being used by an amazing demographic of, 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 of men and women, um, and kids, um, grown men, not this grown man, but, uh, there, there was a fair amount on the ribbon cutting that day where I know there was a couple of guys there that were, uh, using the skate park that were probably, uh, in their early forties, uh, it's safe to say. So very, very excited, very happy for, um, the, the folks that have been waiting so patiently for that project to be completed. Uh, and I know that, uh, we're going to be putting a bathroom there, uh, and then perhaps a small pavilion for some shade area. And, and then there's some future plans, I hope, to drive for that location. I'll kind of keep those under my hat for now. And then just to reiterate again, you know, the passing of Diane Waterman and, and what she meant to, um, this community and, and honestly, this set of commissioners. So, uh, she'll be sorely missed. And one other thing, I, um, I had another complaint from a, a Waterman, uh, his, some, another theft on his boat. And, and the camera actually caught the person. But it's such a grainy photo and such a terrible photo, you can't even, you can't even. And they're smart. They're not parking. They're coming down the hill. There's just, we, again, I, I know that some of the responsibility of protecting their personal belongings on the boat falls on their, you know, lock it up, don't take, don't leave it on the boat. But that still doesn't change the fact that they're paying rent at a county-owned marina that we manage. Uh, and, and I think we need to do a better job on the security part of things. And I'm just throwing that out there, um, to see what sticks. And that's all I have.
And I'm just going to hop on that one too. Todd, we, we need to get a, a price to get those things upgraded. They're not even 4K cameras. They're ten eighty P cameras. You can barely tell that we need, we're in a day and age now where we can get eight K cameras with license plate readers because a lot of these are transients passing through, getting on the boats. While I agree and disagree with you is that, you know, that people shouldn't be going on other people's boats.
No, I agree.
To me, it's just, that's a ridiculous thing.
But you don't leave your purse on the front seat of your car with the door open either.
I get it, but, you know, anyway, I, we, we need to get those cameras upgraded. And actually, we need to, I think we should take a s- look at our stock of cameras around the county, wherever we're using them for any kind of security. Make sure they're into this century. I mean, look, crime is getting worse. We just had a murder in Middletown. I mean, come on, it's, you know, yeah, actually a second one. Well, at least a pedestrian hit, but, uh, you know, so there's, things go on and people, we get a lot more people across that bridge from other areas that bring, you know, some of that stuff with us. The outlets are constantly under siege, it seems like. So we need to tighten up what we got and we can certainly afford to put the cameras and upgrade them. So.
Seven hundred.
Good?
Yeah, man.
Well, before I get off of Jack, six more weeks. And you're going, you're going to take the throne, right?
Oh, yeah.
Looking forward to it. I really am. You, you know, for the public doesn't know, you, you're living under a rock. Jack's going to be the president of Mako, Maryland Association of Counties, and we're all going to be there to, you know, bust that party open, huh, Phil?
I will be bringing my A game.
That's right. So looking forward to that. Uh, what Patrick started talking about was, uh, yesterday was the groundbreaking ceremony for the new hospital in Easton. And there was well over a hundred people, maybe a hundred fifty easily.
There was, I heard there was three hundred people there.
That could be right. And ironically, uh, you know, the parking was, they were parked everywhere. So where I parked was the furthest point away from where you get off the highway, but I cut through the ice rink. And I just have forgotten how big ice rinks are. I think it's just enormous and it's, it's, it's a beautiful facility. Then the event was in the gymnasium. They, they'd covered the floor. They had a big stage up and, and it was two regulation high school-sized basketball courts. I mean, so I got a real feel for what that new project that we're looking at could be. But it was, you know, the government, governor was there, uh, Andy Harris was there, uh, you know, the, the president of University of Maryland Medical System and Ken was there, Senator Hershey, our delegates, you know, Johnny Mouse. I mean, everybody on the eastern shore was there. And it was, it was fitting. Not going to be open till twenty-eight, right? I think they said twenty-eight, but it's coming. And what Patrick was, was alluding to was, you know, in the, in the past, I can remember when I first moved here, I was always told stories about how, you know, if we want to get a good doctor here, we have to wine and dine them. You got to show the wife where the, where the best places are, you know? If they got kids, you take them to the schools and show them. I mean, we got world-class schools here, you know, restaurants, uh, facilities and.
Farms.
And, well, and I don't, I don't think we really have any crime here, but, you know, I just say, you know, you, you got to love where you work or you got to make a hell of a lot of money to make you work there. So we got those choices. But, you know, I think that that's something, you know, maybe a, a collection of county, uh, individuals can do the wine and dining when it, when it gets to that point to hopefully bring some quality doctors here in a brand-new facility and, and take care of that problem where everyone just says, I just want to go to Indianapolis. I want to go to Indianapolis. Like, you know, not me. I'd rather go what's closest. Because, you know, right, Phil?
Yeah. Well, I, you know, one, you know, you, you can build this, you know, this five hundred million dollar facility or whatever the number's going to be, but you got to staff it, you know? You've got to have, you know, the nurses, the doctors, the administrators, the, I mean, you got to have people to staff it, you know? And so it is just as equally as important as the recruitment and retention of these folks is the actual building of the, of the hospital itself.
So in, in another note, uh, our county administrator, Todd Mon and myself, uh, went, uh, with the Baltimore Metropolitan Council of St. Louis. And what I didn't know was St. Louis and Baltimore are two independent cities surrounded by St. Louis County and Baltimore County. Where we have probably two and a half times the population that they have in St. Louis. Uh, it was an interesting trip. Uh, you know, we were right downtown.
Did you go up into the arch?
No, I didn't go up. I, I stood underneath the arch.
Ah, yeah.
Yeah. But, uh, no, it was a, it was a good time. It was a great, great trip, you know? Went out Tuesday morning and came back Thursday evening and, and, uh, you know, we, we had, uh, I think close to fifty people on that trip. So it was, it was exciting. So say.
It's, it's, you know, there, there are portions of St. Louis, obviously down on the river where the arch is. And you have, you know, you have Busch Stadium there. Um, uh, I went to, I went to high school there.
Did you really?
Yeah. So, uh, I spent, you know, four years in, in, in and out of St. Louis, the city and, and the suburbs and, uh, it's a great place. Again, it's the gateway to the west and I recommend if you go back, you got to go up in the arch. That's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Do you know it has its own weather pattern?
It has its own weather pattern?
Can have its own weather pattern because it's so tall.
The arch. That's good. Wow. Well, I think that's, uh, well, you know, I, I'm going to, you know, throw a little.
The B word?
No, I just want to, you know, uh, you know, there's stories that I can remember from Diana, uh, and when I first met her. And you're right. I, I wouldn't be here right now if it wasn't for her.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, her family. And, and, uh, I just think that her accomplishments were far and wide across the state of Maryland. You know, and, and just getting Governor Hogan elected, uh, on her watch was, you know, phenomenal. So, you know, poor, poor Barry also had to compete between politics and, and, you know, with, with the wife running off and, and taking him all over the country. Uh, you know, God bless him and, and I, you know, I, I feel for the, the entire family, but, uh, you know, his extended, her extended family also. So, you know, God bless you and I, and I hope you have, uh, safer times where you are now. So with that, I'll take a motion. So I'm up. So I'm up. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.